I don't get reception in here, but I should.
Intentionally. So we record the meetings and then they go out on YouTube, this YouTube channel with them. And you should be good to go.
Six thirty?
Yep.
All right, we will call to order the Lamberton City Council regular meeting at City Hall for January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty. And the first thing we've got is swearing in of.
Yeah, so I think I'll have you both just stand up and then read your. That should be it.
Can I go over there?
We're in the sending here.
There, yeah, by the flag or whatever.
You guys can read them quick.
Okay.
I have to hold up my right hand.
Leah, didn't you have to get in? Oh, no.
No. I, Amanda Cairns, just only swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and to discharge faithfully the duties of the office of city councilperson of the city of Lamberton, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God. Ta-da.
Well, welcome to the city council.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
It's not my first phone, but you know.
It's all good.
All right, then we've got additions or deletions to the agenda?
I don't know.
No, none, okay. Then we've got.
Are we gonna, sorry, I don't know if it counts as an addition or deletion, were we gonna change up the
Order?
Eh, I didn't know if that.
No, as long as.
You had to say that.
Yeah.
Or not.
We'll just zip your own.
Okay.
Consent agenda, so we've got approval of the minutes for October thirtieth, EDA minutes, December ninth, city council regular minutes, December ninth, truth and taxation public hearing, December tenth, city council work session, and December twenty-four, special city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed? Motion carries. General business. Um. Ditions, do you wanna do the department reports?
You can, if you wanna do them now.
So, okay, let's move down to the department reports for now, and we'll start with the maintenance department.
Continue, please. No. Well. Um. Basically, we had talked about getting estimates for the windows up to the clinic.
Oh, yeah.
And the next day after council meeting, I got ahold of people, and we received them today. So.
Wait, today?
I need to go through this more and narrow it down for you guys and figure out what everything is, but according to this, you're looking at anywheres from eight to thirteen thousand, roughly. Depending on how we do it, I need to narrow down exactly what each of this is, just wanted to give you that information of roughly where we're at.
Okay.
And I had it figured with the big glass and then a false bottom, and then a big glass and a small window on the bottom. And just from briefly going over this, it's almost cheaper to put big window, small window than to have a panel and fill it in, which is odd to me, but I will get that a lot closer.
Did you, with that, did you want to make a decision on the clinic rent and lease? Or do you wanna wait again another month?
Well, we kinda have to get that.
Is that lease available for me to read?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Why don't, why don't we wait without?
Okay.
Lynn here and Amanda new.
Um.
Let's wait a month.
Okay, when does, when was the renewal on it?
Wow, it's supposed to be February, but
Okay.
You're supposed to do it at least three months prior while we're we're all floating in the wind on that anyway, so don't.
Okay.
We'll just keep going status quo with them until.
One thing I gotta ask is, is there a preference on any way you wanna see that?
No.
Would.
I don't know.
All, well, ask the way it was currently? Or that small window on the bottom, we block off and it'd be window and cow, any preference either way?
Well, if it's cheaper to put it back in the way it is, that would be my preference.
Well, I, yes, I understand that. But just thought.
Yep.
And ask, so other than that, I don't have much, yes.
Taking trees down.
Taking trees down, which we've had a lot of calls on that, but what do you do?
Right, a lot of calls. Complaining or?
Yeah, they're upset that taking the trees down, well, they're infected, they're ashtrays, so.
And I should have done a better job of notifying, just putting something out there that it was gonna happen, but I don't know, they just showed up, started doing it.
So were people that own the property the ones complaining, or just other random?
Both.
Okay.
Just up that then. Um, we haven't heard anything more from Matt yet on the on the tree.
No, I talked to him this afternoon though, and I told him that we wanted to get that done sooner rather than later.
I have been putting it out there though, that more than likely, we're not gonna trees planted in the boulevard. But not putting any words in his mouth, but just saying that it's a good possibility.
Are they coming back to grind the stumps out?
Yep.
Okay.
So what they're doing is, is they're taking the trees down, and then they're keeping track, so we have enough money to remove the stumps of the trees that have been taken out.
Okay.
So come spring though, and they're gonna wait till spring to do that, the way John made it sound, so.
All right, anything else on yours?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Say opposed? Maintenance, we're accepted.
Come around. Okay. Go on to, oh, oh, we're in the meeting. Oh, this.
Back to back tomorrow.
Okay, so the Okay, Tom was gonna come, but he's not here, so.
Well, we'll go back to the regular part then.
Okay.
And we'll hit the rest of the departments later. So the first thing we've got, the citizen complaints, none?
None.
None. Building zoning permits, none, request for council action, quest for utility bill, credit refund.
That needs to wait till you know where the money's coming from, and I would say I guess I would not be in favor of doing the refund, they could just hold their payment for how many ever months till that credit gets used up versus having to figure out how to do a credit, cuz I know that also is difficult on our end.
And it's them pushing the payment to us, it's not us grabbing it, so I don't I, I, yeah. And being that it's just his name on the bill, and it's our goal that he would move to, um. Yeah, I don't know, I kinda just wait and see what, what happens. But this now, we finally got this back in the mail, his bill back in the mail, so I don't think he's even aware of it. Um. If it is coming out of his account. But now that will get sent to his Arco address, so he should get alerted that if this is coming out of his account, this credit, so.
I guess that's my opinion, it's I would not, I mean, especially when we don't know it being different names and different accounts and different monies and.
Right. And that's what Lynn stopped in before, and that's her wanted to vote, make that vocal that, yeah, she'd like to know where that money's coming from, you know?
Right.
And they could just stop payment and utilize the credit.
Right.
Versus having to pay it out.
Right.
So let's just table that one for now and. Request for water bill credit?
Kathy, I guess she had some other, something else was going on, and they were in the basement, and they realized that her water softener was just letting water flow through. Um, so that's why her usage was high, so they did fix it, um. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve, cuz that's.
That's.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, and any other discussion? And what we normally do on these is we give them a one time, if somebody's bill was toilet runs or whatever it is, it's a one time deal, and we credit half of it is what we've been doing.
Max, it's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
Okay, so. So we've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed? Motion carries. Uh, request for community center refund.
So, yeah, she had rented the community center, ended up in the hospital. Then they moved the date, well, then her brother died, then they were all together because her brother had died. So then they were like, why do we need to get together for Christmas? So, they were just gonna cancel the reservation altogether, so she's just asking, um, for the rental fee paid back.
Yeah, so they didn't use it?
No.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed? Motion carries. RCA for, go ahead.
That ties into what she kinda has written in her report. So there's currently no policy standing on that?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
No, so I told, right, like I have.
I wanted to make sure with voting that there's.
Right.
But, yeah, we definitely need to, okay.
Yeah.
That's more on the other.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Yeah, that's, yeah, now that's something that we need to kinda work on.
RCA for employee step increases, two thousand twenty-five.
Well, I thought identification, maybe I screwed those up, well, that's on the one in the back, okay, yes. Happy and pace, okay, so, yeah, step increases, so we B and I, I had her come to look at the, this the wording on the vacation, and then I was, we were talking about step increases, cuz I struggle here and there and yada yada, um. But then in looking in what our pay structure says at the bottom, it pretty much implies that if you work the twenty eighty, that you automatically get a step increase. We'd like to look at that language and put something into policy, maybe that more states of what our intentions are as far as that goes.
Could, it's very gray.
Yeah, it's very gray, so.
Well, I thought that was if they pass the review or the review thing, cuz we.
It's not worded that way.
But we've withheld it before, so.
Right, right, but in rereading it, it's not written that way. So we need to.
We need to be more clear.
And adding in something about merit base as well, so.
And it's not in there now, and that's something that we need to, we need to look at and do, um. But obviously, it isn't gonna get done before this next payroll, so. Right now, um. So, yeah, so essentially is what we were thinking is that everybody that's full time would get the step increase, um. And then we, we look at policy and figure out what it needs to say and make it more clear. Um. For that. And then you also have to decide if it's for hours starting December thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four, which will include two days into two thousand twenty-four, or start at this payroll of January thirteenth, today starts a new payroll. So we just need to know when that starts.
So it has to be a payroll date.
I like it that way, yeah.
Okay.
If I do the first of the year, then I have to create a whole nother.
Well, I guess, I think it should be the thirtieth, because that's what's gonna get the people the twenty eighty and not the thirteenth could jeopardize that, that two weeks.
Pushing it off two weeks next year.
Right. So.
I I would make a motion to approve this with the, uh, the hours worked starting of the December thirtieth.
Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, vacation accrual wording.
So when I, when I had to do this in the personnel policy, I started to doubt myself.
You didn't change it again. I just noticed.
With the one year? Well, yeah, that's because I think, I think it's clear now, well, cuz I say up to one year, and then the one year to three years. Because it doesn't say anything on the tape, as we listen to the, the recording again, so then I was like, well, okay. So I just left it, and I wanted to make sure that it's clear of what the intent was.
We talked about the confusion of the, is one year at the end of twelve months, or is it cuz you typically think of twelve months being a year, so it's the end of the twelve months, right? That's how it would.
Yep, up to the one year.
So that's the start of the thirteenth month as your one year. Yeah, I think that's clear.
So that's what I, I mean, this is what will be in the, the policy, if that's I don't know if you wanna vote on it, whatever, but that's I mean, we voted down the hours and stuff the last time, I just wanted to make sure the wording was correct.
What is the start time, is it their, their hire date? Or is it, uh, full year begins in January?
Start, wow.
Based on date of hire?
Date of hire.
Okay.
Well, okay, I thought it said it in there, but it. I'm sure it does, cuz that's when you're, I mean, your time starts, the clock starts once you're hired.
So we need a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed? Motion carries. Then we'll go back to department or continue on with department reports, Tom, fire?
Not my turn yet, are you all done with everybody?
Uh, we're doing them kinda as they're sitting here in case you got places to be.
So far.
Okay.
Um. Don't have a whole lot, uh, so they pop in, bring you up to speed. We, uh, did lose a mobile radio out of one of our trucks through the fall, so I'm in the process of replacing that, um. Cost of the radio, I forgot, the bid is laying up in, on my copier. I wanna say I come in around forty-five hundred dollars programmed. That's without installation, so. That's, that's for a new mobile radio for one of these trucks, so.
Does it pay to do an insurance claim?
No, radios, it's, we went back and forth, and the radio's over fifteen years old. So there's no support to it, I could have twenty-five hundred dollars in the radio, and we'd still have nothing. So, so that's why I kinda made the choice to upgrade it. Um, this will be one I still think is coming down the road from talking with the sheriff that we are gonna have to have equipped the radios in two thousand twenty-seven. So this one is, is that, has that availability in there? Um, all of them in the units won't need that, but certain ones will at that point. And this is, uh, I'm around with just everybody that's able to bump into the channels and hear everything. And that's for the privacy of some of this stuff, if you're out there talking about things, so. Also, I do have a couple handhelds that I purchased a couple years ago that have that capability, so. Our radio grant through the county fell through again. So. Far as I know, FEMA is everything going on in California, I wouldn't be looking for a lot of support out of FEMA for a few minutes, no, I don't.
No.
Yeah, from everything I'm hearing, they're not funding any any, uh, vehicles. Uh, basically, with the grant writers that I've reached out to and just talked to a little bit here at the end, I assume. That's roughly seventy to ninety thousand are what they're kind of gearing towards for your department, so trying to spread what they do have amongst more people, so. So I don't know where that's, something to just think about is, uh, our bumper's twenty years old now. So. I did price a new tanker bumper a year and a half ago, and that come in at over five hundred thousand dollars, so.
You do put that a little bit, you sum aside, right, in the budget for capital, your capital improvements or?
Yeah, yeah, there is that, uh, we did not raise fire rates last year through the townships, I believe, we did add we added another twenty-five dollars to basically steering to the truck fund. But going forward, like I said, we're gonna have to start cost sharing a little harder with with pace, so.
Do we know what's in that fund now?
We've been bumping roughly about twenty thousand a year into that, I think, since we started doing that, but we did take some out when we purchased this grass rig and, and upgraded our cheese rig here five years ago, so.
That's been five years already?
Close to it.
Oh, yeah.
Cheese rig has been, the grass rig is probably three, that was when that celebration was, that's when we got that in service.
Is it sixty-four thousand?
So we're a little short yet.
We're a little. Yeah, so like I said, it's just something to just kinda that way out there, and, yeah, nothing, nothing's getting cheaper, unfortunately. So. We're just bringing up to speed, uh, the bumper is, is functioning well. We do go through it every, every other year, I come in, pump test it, and we go through them, and there's some things that some of the stuff last fall that we got into, we do have a couple valves and a couple other things that need to be replaced again, but it's just you know, maintenance on them, so. When they work, they work really well, and when they don't work, cost a lot of money to fix them, unfortunately, so.
All right, anything else?
I think that's all I really got for you right now, so.
Are you fully staffed? Are you?
There's currently around seventeen, yeah.
And so how many more are you looking for or need?
Twenty is where we're.
Twenty?
That's where our contract is, so, with the state, so.
I just didn't know if you had anybody in the mix or not, so I thought.
Not really out there, we had one that was kinda interested, but he quit his job, moved out of town, so.
They want that idea.
So. Yeah, we are putting some feelers out, the guys are kind of, I said, I kind of put it on at least some of these other guys to start doing some recruiting out there, because I gladly do whatever, but it's hard for me to recruit an eighteen to twenty-year-old and
You don't.
Make a lot of guarantees, unfortunately, but, you know. As I said, I'm glad I'm hanging around a while, but I don't know how long, so. So, we're going that way, so.
And then one of the two checks that are added is the fire, state aid fire money that has to go back, goes again. Tom usually lets me know that I have to pay it back out to him, I didn't realize that there was a thirty-day limit on it, so I'll get dinged on the audit, but, um, that's one of the checks that's going back out, so.
And I actually had to ask about it, and thought that was taken care of with somebody else. Evidently, the wires got crossed, what I said, and when he was, cuz he was coming in to talk to you about something else, I sort of see if that's showing up yet, he'll know what I'm talking about, to say, I, I kinda wonder what it is, so.
So just so you know, that's one of the checks, and that will go back right back out to them, so.
Two percent state aid money, so.
Hey? Somebody wanna make a motion to approve the fire department?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Library, we had one submitted.
Then I'm gonna add the library, just, um. So during the audit this last week, one of the questions was, is that our aid from the county went down from two thousand twenty-three, it was like thirteen thousand two hundred, to this last year was seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four.
What?
Yeah, and the reason for that decrease, I found out today, was that there was the out-of-city county circulation went down significantly, and that's why that aid went down, and they, that whatever. What they're counting there is they are circulation of material issued to patrons not living in one of the cities that a library is in. As the philosophy behind the formula was explained to him that county aid should be focused on getting materials throughout the county. Um, the city aid should be looking to support the library within its own boards, and state aid is for the general overall support of the library. So, like, let's say you had Storndge Ferris people that don't have libraries in their town getting materials from our library, that helps with the, so, the formula, which he gave me, which I'll, I'll get that email to you guys all, but just so you know.
Does digital?
So that hurts us or helps us?
It hurts us.
We lost seven thousand dollars.
More out-of-town people coming.
Does digital, um, circulation count or no?
Don't know.
How do they track that?
I think their Plum Creek Library System, the system she uses to check out books and stuff, I think with their library card, I suppose it has their address, and so through that, I would assume that they're.
I thought it would be high with sort of ants.
I would have thought.
Them are out of town.
But you know, the, the side of it becomes is, do they go there to hang out, or are they getting material? You know, are they using things? And that's yeah, those numbers make a difference.
Well.
If kids are looking at books, maybe they need to be checked out and even checked back in that day.
Right.
To have that count, because if they're in there and looking at books, even though, you know, maybe it's younger kids, they're looking at smaller books or magazines, maybe it needs checked out and then checked back in.
Right.
To get to count as a circulation, cuz they're still utilizing the
The services.
The service. And they're still utilizing material.
Right.
That could be an option, I had a question on the, which I know you're not gonna know the answer, but maybe you can, says the board, talking about the two and their positions and having missed meetings and such, so is it a part of their requirements or their?
I believe it's a part of the library bylaws.
Bylaws, okay, to attend so many?
Yeah.
Okay, so then we just need to follow the bylaws? Okay. Just making sure here. And then for that last bullet on the rental agreement, so we talked about that briefly earlier, so I'm really surprised that there's nothing that exists.
Right.
So I feel like, yeah, they definitely need to get something formally in place that exists between, that's agreeable between the library board and the city.
So now I'm questioning, why is the librarian board?
Even with the community center, yeah.
That's, that's the part I'm, like.
Well, now that you say it aloud.
Well, if, if the librarian's in charge of it.
Okay.
The, the board is in charge of the librarian, I guess is the best way to put it.
Okay, I didn't know, I mean, I just, it's one of her duties as assigned, and it just comes through you guys instead of the board, but I don't know, it just was my thought in my head that how does that work? And if you're fine with it going through their board, and they figuring it out, and then you guys give the final blessing, that's fine, but.
If they want, if they don't feel that's something that is up to them, then, then we'll do it. Cuz I really don't care one way or the other, I just want it done.
Well, and I think what's said here is you know, it's it is our decision, but there, we'd like their recommendation.
Okay.
That's, or I would like to recommend it, so.
That works.
All right, anything else on the library report? Now, somebody wanna make a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve. A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed? Carries. Ambulance department? Something on that one? Something on that one? Uh, police report.
This report.
And he, I see he did address that we are. Listed on the post.
We are not listed on the post.
Okay, so I thought maybe, cause I asked about that last time and then I see he specifically said that we are.
Unless he sees it, I, I, I don't know, I don't.
Can we follow up on that again, please?
Yeah, and then it, I just need to know from you guys, it's okay to put, keep just, keep putting it on post until filled or whatever.
Uh, yes, do you need a motion?
I'm fine with just posting it, cause we've done this for years and.
Yeah, just, even though if we're not filling it, we're not, definitely not gonna get anybody if it's not listed.
Right. I think one of, I mean, I do, yeah. It's hard right now just because we don't have anybody that could train anybody in any way or.
Right, but.
Well, but.
Are we gonna get anybody if we don't get anybody either? I mean, it's like, we gotta start somewhere.
Right.
Okay, thank you for following up on that. Then I will, did you have a question?
Yeah, but I can probably ask it outside of the meeting, just how many police officers do we have? How does it work? Cause I've talked with one. But it's not Josh.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have Josh as our police chief, part-time police chief out of, um. Can be, he's out on medical leave right now. And then we have Chuck, who is just kind of like an on-call. And then, then we have Derek Detterman, but he hasn't really done anything yet. So, we added him, just part-time, filling when they can.
And we're basically looking for a full-time. But they're extremely hard to find, so.
They're few and far between. Alright, I would make a motion to approve that report.
I second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. They opposed? Motion carries, administration E D A report.
So we did the audit this last week, it went pretty well. Like I said, I will get, it will, they call it a legal thing or a legal write-up. For the money not going back out to the police within, or the fire within thirty days, I don't know what that entails, but they'll put it in their report. And then that other check that's on that list, that two that I added for today with the bond and for December. I never paid. I don't know that I ever got noticed, but. We're gonna pay it now, so they caught those two things, um. Other than that, they're waiting on a couple of things and of course they have to wait till the end of January to get. The next big statements to tie it out, um, otherwise it went fairly well. Some questions, that's about it.
Have you got any questions?
I do not.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye. They opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance and resolution, resolution. Including part-time police officer P R A and a resolution accepting donations.
And the P R A one is just. We have to adopt it by resolution for a part-time police officer. To offer pair to them.
And he's currently working?
Yeah, he did one shift, but it was just the parade, parade night. But it's only based on the hours that he works. So it's not anything we give unless they work. It's a percentage of their pay.
Is there any schedule?
No.
For them?
No.
So how do we know when he's working?
Tells us. He tells us.
We tend to maybe get people that can come and work in between their other jobs. So we get the leftovers of what's available from other people usually, personally.
The better chance of flipping a coin.
Yeah.
And it is just an hourly paid position, not a salary paid?
No, that one's not a salary, no. No.
So with the donations, we've got Redwood Electric for seven fifty to the age-friendly committee. And what is the, is it pronounced Robbie?
Yeah, Robbie or Rabby. They're the ones that live on the curve south of town.
Okay.
Going out to Sanborn.
Yeah, okay. And there's ambulance five hundred. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve those?
A second.
Got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. They opposed? Motion carries. Financial report and approval of claims.
Extra ones there.
Yeah, just had those checks, which, what is the, what is the fire? Percent money?
I didn't see anything here, what was out of sorts?
So this parks. Equipment for seven hundred and three thousand dollars, what was that for?
Was a seven hundred and three thousand. Must have been a table on that one.
Where is that at? The, the claims total, so. American.
You know what check number it is, or?
Well, it's a total. To, i- in the January financial report.
On this one bill? Oh, and seven hundred and three is the claims total for all.
Right.
Okay.
What's that for?
It's for all the bills.
All bills.
It's not for parts, it's just parts.
So like, this is a. That's just new vendors, alright.
Then, yep.
Alright, I was wondering what kind of park equipment did we get for that?
Yes, no, the plate, fifteen thousand, which. Yeah, we got, we're getting a little. That thing and then a Gaga ball pit.
In charge of cleaning the ball pit?
Gaga ball, it's just a fenced-in area kind of, and it, it's just dirt in there, it's not, it's not a ball pit.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, that'd be gross.
Yeah. Not everywhere, mm.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I guess I'll second.
Alright, we got a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. They opposed? Motion carries. Mayor and council reports and communications.
So the budget books were in your packet, there are two numbers that Lynn caught that are off under the clinic. Um, general liability insurance. Think it was only fifteen hundred and fifteen thousand. And then under parks, other contractual services should also be fifteen hundred, not fifteen thousand. So you know what she. But then just so you know, that in that book has the payroll schedule. It has meeting dates, fee schedule, utility rates. So that information is. Generally, we get questions on, is all of them.
So I had a couple of questions if I can ask.
Yep.
Um, I saw in a few areas, like the community center, we've got part-time wages. But we have employer-paid health insurance and life insurance. And then there was another one, E D A, part-time wages. But employer-paid life and health.
So what happens is the librarian is full-time. But part of her wages go towards the community center, cause she's in charge of that, so we just take a portion of. Her full-time pay and her health insurance gets paid by the community center amount instead of.
Okay.
It's not a separate person, it's just, it's part of a full-time.
It's part of the total compensation package, okay.
So then like for me, I'm E D A director along with city clerk, so part of my wages and my health insurance come out of for E D A.
Gotcha, that makes more sense. And then. I noticed that the clinic. Income. Is less than.
The clinic expenses.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that only because we're looking at replacing windows or are we, do we subsidize having a clinic in town?
Right now, it's only because of the windows. Cause we, we put in twenty-five thousand for. Yeah, because of the buildings, meaning to the building.
And the liability insurance?
That should have been that fifteen hundred instead of.
Fifteen, okay.
Yeah.
That makes a difference. Yeah, I'd love to look at that lease.
Yeah.
I think it was in last month's council pass, I don't know. She could pay much quicker than that, so, whatever.
Yeah, cause the, the rent last year. Was seventy-eight hundred. And yet our budgeted expenses was eight thousand percent.
Right.
Yeah, we had a. Major sewer line on that. And a floor and stuff that had to be redone.
How much is that kind of use?
Three days a week.
Three days a week, I don't.
And they're busy those three days?
Oh, yeah.
Part of the, the other side of looking at the clinic expenses is the taxes, so we have to pay property tax. On that building because we charge rent. But we do get part of that property tax. You know, and of course, we don't get the straight accounting part, but we get our city. Even though it's expense, there is a little bit that's coming back.
So it's a gross lease where we cover all the expenses and they just pay their rent?
Right now it is.
Right now it is.
We're working towards. A few things to change, one, right now, we're supposed to do all the snow removal and all the lawn care and we haven't done lawn care. Well, we didn't last year at all because we don't meet their expectations and snow removal, we don't meet their expectations as well. Um, so we've said, okay, then you need to take care of that on your own, um. But all other things, I shouldn't say all other things, when it comes to things that they need like security or something, you know. To make a lab piece of equipment fit or whatever, they pay for that, but if it's like structural for the building that is just kind of. Like the sewer, that sort of stuff, then it's.
The windows.
And is that an annual lease? How long is that lease term?
Um, it's a three-year lease, my. Whole, is this next lease is I'm asking for a percent change every year for three years, so that's built into the lease, that wasn't before. Um, so. Until we know what we're doing with the windows, they're not willing to sign the lease, and we're not willing to sign the lease, so we have to figure that part out.
Yeah, line is kind of big, so we probably don't have a whole lot of weight to negotiate, but I would love to read that lease and. See what can be done, cause I. It'd be nice if, if what we're getting in. Is more than what we're paying out.
Right, it should at least break even. Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, after the budget book, when bond is done, explanation.
That should be that email in there. So during. In the last cage of the packet. Um. During our. December twenty-fourth meeting, you asked if that's on or when it's new. Or when it comes due, so I asked them and it's a year later than we thought, it's twenty twenty-six that it matures. So. I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that because that was questioned on.
But how much are we paying on that?
I believe that's the hundred and. A hundred and eleven and whatever the interest is.
Alright, then we got next meeting dates, uh, regular city council on February tenth. Does anybody have anything else? Uh, we will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second, all in favor?